Try that again. Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for February 1st, 2023. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Constitution, states, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, et infinitum.
Thank you. Okay, we have a few presentations this morning, as we usually do. These are some pretty, pretty special ones. So we're going to start with this being February 1st, beginning of Black History Month. I'm not sure, is this Mr. Griggs, are you kicking us off? All right. Mr. Bernard Griggs is our Head of Special Projects and also our Diversity Coordinator. And he's bringing up with him Linda Sally, who is the Chair of the African American History Museum of Bucks County. Morning, Mr. Griggs.
Is this microphone on? Thank you, Commissioner. So as Commissioner said, good morning, everyone. I am Bernard Griggs, Project and Diversity Officer here at the County of Bucks. And I'm joined here today with Linda Sally, who is President and Executive Director of the African American Museum of Bucks County. And we're here today to talk about Black History Month, as Black History Month begins here for the month of February. We will talk about the African American exhibits that are on display in the lobby of the Administration Building and the Justice Center. And we will also talk about the African American Museum construction project that is currently underway. And as Black History Month begins, it's important to note how and why the month of February became the month in which February would be celebrated as Black History Month. Black History Month really began as Negro History Week, a label applied by historian Carter G. Woodson in 1926. And it was during that time in history that Woodson was bothered by the fact that many textbooks and other historical views, reviews, minimized or ignored the contributions of Black figures. Along with his association for the study of Negro life and history, later, Woodson earmarked the second week of February to raise awareness of these stories. Woodson chose that week specifically because it covered the birthdays of American abolitionists Frederick Douglass, whose birthday is February 14th, and President Abraham Lincoln, whose birthday is February 12th. The ensuing publicity led to many mayors and college campuses to recognize the week. And through the years, the Ground 12 support allowed the occasion to stretch throughout the entire month of February. And in 1976, President Gerald Ford made Black History Month official by saying that he was urging everyone to, quote, "seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor through our history," end quote. And so each year, as Black History Month is celebrated, among the notable figures that are often spotlighted are Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who fought for equal rights for Blacks during the 1950s and 60s. Thurgood Marshall, the first African American justice appointed to the United States Supreme Court in 1967. Mae Jemison, who became the first female African American astronaut to travel to space in 1992. Barack Obama, who was elected as the first ever African American President of the United States in 2008. And now added to the list of figures, Kamala Harris, who was elected as the first ever African American Vice President of the United States in 2020. And so at this time, I will bring Linda Sally up, and she will tell you a little bit about the exhibits that are on display, both here at the Admin Building and at the Justice Center, and also talk about the journey and the mission of the African American Museum of Bucks County.
Thank you. First, let me say thank you to all of you who have supported the African American Museum of Bucks County. I'm gonna pull this up a little bit. I'm a little taller. This is my pleasure, it is our pleasure, to be here today to tell you about the journey that we have taken over the past nine years. I'm going to tell you a story that got us started. I said it, "For my people, it's for my people, not for me, for my people." The story must be told, and now is the time to tell it. Three gentlemen came together. The name was Wal- Walter Jacobs, Millard Mitchell, and Harvey Spencer. They planted a seed in 12 friends. It was their dream. That dream was that one day, African American history will be taught in Bucks County Community College, I mean Bucks County Schools and Colleges as well. What good is a dream if it's not watered? Well, there was a little lady that had about, heard about the gathering of African Americans in First Baptist Church of Langhorne that wanted a museum. She came, she listened, but most of all, she believed in a museum mission. Then she spoke. This is a great dream, Linda. It will happen. That was nine years ago. I had no idea that this would happen, but she believed that it would, and here we are today. Nine years ago, 2014, the late Joan Sadoff launched our first event, her documentary, Standing on My Sister's Shoulders, introducing the museum to Bucks County community. Ms. Joan Sadoff, friend and benefactor of the African American Museum Bucks County. She's the producer of the Standing on My Sister's Shoulder. These people are on your display now on the exhibit. You will see Harvey Spencer, you will see Millard Mitchell, and you will also see Joan Sadoff, who was believing in us when we didn't believe in ourselves. She actually put encouragement into us to go forth. She said it was needed, and I believed her. And she said we could do it, and we did. It's not over. We're still working at it. And we'll get there, but only with the help of each and every one of you in this room today. You have already helped us so far, you gave us a footstool. Now I need a ladder. I need you to really help me get there. We need to open up this museum and show the world, show Bucks County what its history is all about. Oh, you have beautiful museums here in Bucks County. Don't, I don't deny that. They're everywhere, and I've been to all of them. But not one of them tell our story. We are going to tell the story of African Americans and beyond, and we're going to tell the whole story. And this will complete the history of Bucks County that has been left out. So many great stories have not been told, and we want to share those stories with our students, administrators, people from all over. We're trying to reach New York. We want to reach New Jersey. We want to step out into Delaware. All of these places want, need to come to Bucks County to see the legacy that has happened right here in Bucks County. Bucks County is known through the Black community as a safe haven. I guess you all don't know that. Because when slaves got here, the Quakers surrounded them and said, "You will not go back." Mr. Langhorne left land. He didn't say, "You're free," and gave you nothing. He gave each family land right there in Langhorne, and it's documented in your records. So it's time now to tell the whole story, not half of it, not a little bit of it, but all of it. The Revolutionary War, the Civil War. We need to talk about these things so that our children have a history to be proud of. And once they know where they come from, once they know what their ancestors do, did to be here, then they will be better citizens, better lawyers, better doctors. Because now, they have a future and they have a past. It's very important that we share that past in this little building that's going to tell so many great stories. Thank you.
I get chills every time I hear this story. Heard it a few times, but it just gets me every time. And so I just want to take a minute to tell you a little bit about the project itself. First of all, you see some of the floor plans in the slideshow, and the location of the museum is actually at the Core Creek Park in Langhorne at 867 Langhorne Newtown Road. And the project is a complete core and shell restoration of the 4,000 square foot farmhouse that you see displayed in the slideshow. And it will be complete with site improvements, tree removal, stormwater management, new utilities, new parking lot, concrete walkways, et cetera. The exterior of the building will get a complete restoration of the existing stone facade, new siding, new windows, new gutters with trim throughout the exterior, and a new roof. The foundation of the building will be stabilized. The basement will be waterproof with a new concrete slab. We'll be adding a new elevator to the building, because now it'll be used for public use. It's required to have an elevator by code. The interior core construction will consist of new wood framing and reinforcement of some of the existing framing, new staircases, new plumbing, HVAC, fire sprinkler, electrical service throughout the building, et cetera. The first floor building plan will have a new entry hall, two bathrooms, an elevator lobby with three exhibition rooms. The new elevator will go to, from the first to the second floor of the building. The second floor plan will consist of three more exhibition rooms, a kitchenette, and an elevator lobby. The third floor, which is actually like a loft, will have, generally be mostly office space with, it's like a two-level loft. The upper level of the loft will actually be a mechanical room. And so when the core and shell construction is complete, which is scheduled to be finished in about 12 months, at that point in time, we will turn the building over to the museum. And those folks at that point in time will start the tenant build-out portion of the construction project. And so this project is pretty exciting. You know, of all the projects that I've been involved with since I've been here with the county, and this project being 26 months into making, just to get to the point where you see in the display there, is really a major milestone to be able to start the project and get on with construction. So we're excited about it and happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything. Here in none, I'll entertain them.
Questions for Mr. Griggs.
I do not have any questions, but I just want to say, I drove past today and I saw stormwater management stuff happening in construction, and that was, that was fun. It's great to go past there and see things happening.
Okay. And just because, you know, obviously, I think Ms. Sally would be mad at us if we didn't point this out, that if you're interested in contributing to this fund to help the African American Museum of Bucks County, take a look at the website. And certainly something I think we can probably post and link online on through our county website. You know, no contribution, it's like church, no contribution is too small, you know? But, you know, hearing, it's nice to hear paper and not hear the change. So, you know, okay? So anything you can do to help, obviously, we're contributing money through the county and, but this is going to be a museum, as Ms. Sally said, and you said, you know, for all of Bucks County. Because it's, if we're not learning all our history, then we're not really learning our history. So, thank you. And did you want to read the proclamation here?
And before you come up, we'll just read part of this proclamation to you. Whereas in the, in the United States, February is observed each year as Black History Month, which focuses on the contributions of African Americans in our nation's history from the first enslaved people brought over from Africa to the African American leaders of today. And we celebrate the innumerable contributions that Black Americans have made to our county and our country, and encourage every county resident to turn to the African American History Museum of Bucks County in this month to learn and grow your understanding and appreciation for the African American experience. And so now, therefore do we, the Bucks County Commissioners, hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month throughout the County of Bucks.
You could all come up for the picture.
Those, just one more thing to add, those in the room, and if you're watching at home, you'll notice the buttons that are being worn by Commissioners and by row officers and other staff here. The buttons are from the, for the African American Museum. These were actually made by residents at Nishamie Manor Nursing Home and sent here. And I'm also very delighted about the fact that the residents themselves and the employees of Nishamie Manor are actually doing fundraising to help benefit the museum. So as I say, everybody's, everyone's doing their part, which is great. You know, a great sign of a good community. Our next presentation comes from the Middle Bucks Institute of Technology's Philanthropy Today Club. And we have a few students here, as well as some staff, so.
Good morning. I am Pamela Sawyer. I am the Work Base Education Coordinator and Philanthropy Today Coordinator at Middle Bucks. And I'm very honored to be able to share my students with you in honor of Career Technical Education Month. Students are accomplishing great things all over the county, actually, today, because it's Skills USA competitions. So as we're here presenting, some of the students from all the technical schools in the county are actually competing against the District of Three Counties, so hopefully, we're winning a lot. But at this time, I'd really like the students to do the talking and have them share their experiences with you. So at this time, I'd like to invite them up to do their introductions and talk to you.
Good morning. I'm Gabriela Scalfarro. I am in the Multimedia Program at MBIT. I hope to be a director in the future, and my sending school is Central Bucks West.
Good morning. My name is Julie Soretees. I'm in the Dental Occupation at MBIT, and my home school is William Tenet, and I hope to be a dental hygienist.
Hello. My name is Liam Ryan. I am in the Multimedia Program at MBIT. My sending school is CB South, and I'd like to be a director one day.
Hello. My name is Emma Donalovich. I'm from the Multimedia Technology Program at MBIT. I am from CB South, and I hope to be a screenwriter in the future.
Good morning. My name is Anders Jacobson. I'm a 200 level student at MBIT, also in the Media Program. I'm an 11th grader at Central Bucks High School South, and I hope to explore media in all its forms through a college education. in all its forms through a college education.
Hello. I'm William Tantum. I also attend the Multimedia and Technology Program, and I also go to Central Bucks South. In the future, I'd like to be a filmmaker and I'd like to attend college for that.
Hi. I'm Brian Daley. I am a junior at CB South, and I also attend Multimedia Technology. My goal for the future is to pursue editing and directing through college.
My name is Bryna Samia. I attend the Medical and Health Program at MBIT. My sending school is New Hope-Solbury, and I plan to become a physician assistant in the future.
My name's Angie Patina. I'm in the Dental Occupation Program at MBIT. My home school is William Tannet, and I hope to be a dental hygienist and a lawyer as
Hi. My name is Chloe Lansky. I attend Multimedia Media Program at MBIT. My home school is also Central Bucks South, and I hope to be a cinematographer in the future.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Pollock. I attend the Computerized Drafting Program at MBIT. My home school is Central Bucks East, and I hope to be an architect in the future.
Good morning. I'm Vadislav Pukka. I do computer drafting at MBIT. My home school is Central Bucks East, and my goal is to become an architect.
My name is Kaia Crowley. I am in the Multimedia Technology Program at MBIT. My high school is Central Bucks West, and my career goal is to be a director in the
The Middle Bucks Institute of Technology's Philanthropy Today Club is the proud recipient of the Norman Rabb Foundation Grant and the Heenan Grant. This is the ninth year that we have been honored with this educational opportunity and grant renewal. We are proud to be here to share our experiences with you in honor of CTE Month, Career and Technical Education Month. Our CTE schools provide us with a career pathway and recognize the fact that we are whole people and need to be well-rounded, well-read, and committed citizens.
The purpose of the Philanthropy Today Club at MBIT is to teach students about philanthropy, how to give responsibility through grant allocation, and how to learn to identify our community's needs. We are given a specific challenge each year from the Heenan Grant. For the Rabb Grant, we do community research and a needs assessment within our community. We develop mission statement, learn about, visit, and determine which local nonprofits align with our mission. We provide grants to the selected nonprofits organization that make a difference in the community and strive to meet the challenge of the Heenan Grant.
As a member of the 2021 to 2022 Philanthropy Today Club, we wish to make the community a safe, friendly, and healthy place. And we did this with the Rabb Grant by supporting organizations who work to lessen addiction and substance abuse, support mental health initiatives, and support children and families in the foster community.
With the Heenan Grant, we researched, redesigned, redecorated, and refurnished the victims' waiting room in the Bucks County District Attorney's Office and lovingly dedicated the space to the victims of Bucks County. The photos in the PowerPoint show you the before and after work of our group. The room was in need of updating, needed new floor plan, new artwork and furniture, a better defined children's play area, and a safe and secure area for the coffee maker.
With our combined experiences in our technical programs, we use the following skills to help complete our project. The Commercial Arts and Multimedia Programs both studied color theory and colors effects on its mood. We had a photography competition across the school where finally we selected four photos, each of which represented the seasons we have here in Bucks County. You can see, you know, there on the walls there, and we did a lot of good work on those. Our students over in the Computerized Drafting Program made a working floor plan and blueprints to help draft where we want to place all the furniture in the room. And our early childhood care and education group picked age-appropriate toys and books for the students there as for the kids there, as well as placing all the children's stuff away from the doorway in a safe and good location in the room.
On May 2nd, we presented the updated and redecorated room to the District Attorney's Office and the citizens and their families who will use it. This year, we have another challenge and a new group of budding philanthropists who are here to speak to you about the grants.
With the Rabb Grant, we created our own mission statement this year after a great deal of brainstorming, researching, and voting. The 2022-2023 MBIT Philanthropy Today Club hopes to help members of our community facing struggles with mental health, sexual abuse, and addiction to prevent further damage and
We have specific criteria we will be looking for when you, sorry, we have specific criteria we will be looking for when you visit the organization, select the support or mission statement. The criteria is, one, location within Bucks County, two, directly addresses a mission statement, three, is a 501(c)(3) with an EIN number, and four, they are physically responsible.
This year, we plan to visit under the Addiction Category, Godentia, Council of Southeast Pennsylvania, Inc., Village Improvement Association, and Good Friends, Inc. Under the Mental Health category, plan to visit National Science of Mental Illness, the One P Valley Foundation, and Family Services Association. Under Sexual Abuse category, we plan to visit A Woman's Place in Nova.
With the Heenan Grant, we have a new challenge, but similar to last year, in supporting victims in Bucks County. We again were given a $10,000 grant to improve an area in the courthouse. We had the good fortune of District Attorney Mr. Matt Weintraub and ADA Ms. Jennifer Shorn of sharing two smaller rooms with us adjacent to the courtrooms on the fourth floor. Mr. Stephen G. Heckman and Ms. Erica Burrows were kind enough to show us the rooms and allow us to work and brainstorm in the space. In the PowerPoint, you'll see photos of our group working to measure and get the size and scale of the space.
We took, we took our measurements back to class and using AutoCAD recreated some blueprints. We then utilized Google SketchUp to see if the things we picked would fit in the rooms
We also did a lot of research on soothing spaces and color theory. We came up with a theme for each of the rooms that are representative of our beautiful Bucks County. One of the rooms will be cover bridges and waterways, and the other one will be the pastoral farms and beautiful animals that reside here. We have multiple students planning on participating by photographing or drawing these scenes, and we also plan to vote on the work selected.
We hope to be able to share the rooms with you when we complete the project this year. We also hold an annual breakfast meeting in May where all the granters and grant recipients gather to celebrate the student learning and acceptance awards. We would love to invite you, the Commissioners, to join us this year on May 9th at MBIT. Now, I'm going to open it up to any questions that you have.
Questions for the students of the Philanthropy Today? Oh, yeah, Matt, DA Weintraub, did you want to say something or?
Of course I do. We, we, we encountered some initial roadblocks. I think that there is an initial resistance in government or in bureaucracy to have to go to the red tape too often. And when you hear it from these students and when you, when you see their work, and hopefully this is a great real-life demonstration that I can attest to personally of their work and the fruits of their labors of love, frankly, our victims and our witnesses absolutely love the new space that you all created for them. And so we wanted to take it to the next level. We had to break through some bureaucratic red tape at the, at the courthouse, at the Justice Center, to enable them to have access to these two new rooms up by courtroom 410. But I expect the same transformation to occur. And it's not just empowering the students, but the students are giving something back to their community by allowing victims and witnesses to feel comfortable in a very, very stressful time in their lives. I think that if we can resist our initial instinct to say no or to say, go check with somebody else and just take a chance. First of all, we're teaching these students that anything is possible, and we're empowering them to help their communities, and that has really been manifest. I can guarantee it because I've seen it. I've seen people spend very, very long and difficult days in relative comfort and peace in the tranquil sanctuary that you all have provided them. So you've planted a great seed, and I would encourage any one of my row officers, my colleagues here, or the Commissioners, or anybody in this room, to take advantage of this wonderful program. And here's the best part of all, it didn't cost us a dime. So please, please congratulate all of these young people for a great job well done on behalf of their community. Thank you all.
Yeah, just real quick, Pamela, I want to compliment you and the students who are here today for the presentation that they made up in front of that microphone. I mean, they were all just really amazing, and it's a credit to the students and a credit to the school. And I just want to compliment for the wonderful presentation that you made today, each and every one of the students.
You did hear a few of the students, did you listen? Did hear a few of the students mention the Heenan Grant, and it would be remiss if we didn't thank Bernadette Hayden, who's here from the Heenan family, for their efforts to raise money and allocate it in this way. So thank you for everything. So, you know, echoing, obviously, the comments of DA Weintraub, you know, of course, the students don't know this, a few people in the room probably do, but I was a teacher at Bucks County Technical High School in Lower Bucks County for 20 years before I got this job. And so it's, you know, I understand fully the value of technical education, and as you heard from the students as they spoke, some of them planning to go into the workforce directly, some of them planning for college, and that is the value really of technical education. As I think most of America is learning now that increasingly, you know, good-paying jobs, jobs that can put food on the table and provide for a family, don't need a college education, you know, like they used to. And so certainly, and we know, we see it here at the county, and I know that a lot of other government agencies are finding the same problem and private businesses finding the same problem, that there, there are a lack of skilled tradespeople who are able to do the kinds of work that you heard, you know, these students describing they want to do. So, you know, it is really, you know, it's, I think America in a lot of ways is late to joining this. A lot of Europe and Asia, other countries, have been on this kind of education track for a while, knowing that it's, it's, it's the best way to provide, as you heard, a well-rounded student. Certainly, the work they did for us is invaluable, as the DA said, to the people that who use those rooms. But certainly, you know, it's getting the students also an idea of, okay, I've learned this stuff in my shops, and I've gotten the theory and everything else, you know, how do I put this in practice? How can I actually do something with this that can make a difference? And just learning the process of how a project gets done. You know, it's not always as easy as people think it is. You start out a project and you start hitting roadblocks. Okay, how do you overcome that roadblock? And doing it, actually performing it, is the best way to understand how to navigate problems and also build the confidence to know that you can navigate other problems. So it's also my honor to read a proclamation here, which I'll present to the students after honoring Career and Technical Education Month. Whereas Career and Technical Education offers students the opportunity to gain academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for career readiness. And whereas students in Career and Technical Education Programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that provide the quality, improve the quality of their education, and increase their engagement and achievement. And whereas the Middle Bucks Institute of Technology is one of three Bucks County Career and Technical Schools offering students a variety of paths, cosmetology to automotive to sports therapy, and many more. And whereas the MBIT Philanthropy Today Club was formed with a mission to provide the mental health, excuse me, to improve the mental health of community members and to support organizations that positively influence at-risk youth within Bucks County and has utilized grant funding each year in furtherance of its goal. And whereas we thank the Philanthropy Today students, who for the last two years have focused their attention on the Bucks County District Attorney's Office, where they have made improvements to the victims' waiting, big offices, victims' waiting rooms. Now therefore do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, hereby recognize and proclaim February 2023 as Career and Technical Education Month throughout the county of Bucks. In doing so, we commend the MBIT's Philanthropy Today Club for applying their talents to comfort those in need at the Bucks County Justice Center. We wish those students continued success in their career and technical education endeavors. So thank you very much for this. You guys come up.
Thank you very much.
Great job, everybody.
Thanks for that. Make sure you see Chloe. Oh, should I hold this out? Wait, I'll let you guys hold it.
Microphone helps. Move on with the next item on our agenda, which is public comment. This is public comment on agenda items, reminding speakers to focus their comments on the specific agenda item today. First name for agenda, public comment, is Liz Yous, Yous, sorry, how did I pronounce that?
Do I have to say where I live in all that?
Yeah, just your name and your township, that's all.
Okay. My name is Liz Yous, and I live in Northampton Township. I'm speaking today about Section 3, Board of Elections on the agenda, a contract with NPC in the amount of $268,697, and then there's a plus sign, postage. The purpose is to approve contract increase and extension for printing and mailing of election materials for March 23 to March 24. I'm curious to know what that plus means. Is this an increase in the contract value from last year, or is this the total contract amount? Can you break down the different components of this contract, meaning how much of that contract is going to printing and how much is going to mailing costs? I just didn't understand what's going on there. Also, I'd like to speak directly to Mr. Harvey. As one of the Commissioners who is up for reelection, it is a conflict of interest that you sit on the Board of Elections. In fact, it is always a conflict of interest for any elected official to sit on the Board of Elections. I am calling on you to resign your seat on the Board of Elections permanently. Thank you.
Okay, next name on the list is Beth Curcio.
Just short questions because the agenda's pretty short today. And one of the things I do always want to ask is if you could put the agenda up sooner than you do. This one's really short. So I have a question about, all right, you have under five, which is finance, is what are we ordering for the $158,090? Is that like all the insurance? they want us to, um, include postage for folks to send the mail-in ballot back to the county. Um, up until this election, folks had to put a stamp on it. Now, it's a business reply, um, mark on there, and then they'll be able to send it back to here at Bucks County. Um, also new in, um, this contract, the amendment part of that language you see there, is the secrecy envelope, which is what the ballot has to go inside, per the law, before it goes in the outer envelope to come back to us. We're gonna, um, copy from some other counties, and it's going to be colored yellow this time, instead of pure white, um, just to hopefully jar people's, like, attention to say, hey, you have to use this thing. Don't discard it when you open the mail-in ballot. It'll have the same words on it that just says secrecy envelope, but it'll be yellow. So that's why this contract's being amended for that. Um, also, you will see new this time, the outer envelope, um, that the mail-in ballot that comes back to us, is going to have a little hole punch in it. The purpose of that hole punch will be from the, you'll, it'll be in the front of the envelope, in the back of the envelope. That'll help us know if the ballot inside is, if there's nothing there, if the envelope's empty, because we'll see sunlight right through it, or if there isn't the yellow secrecy envelope. And then we'll be able to know, um, before 7:00 AM on Election Day, um, if we can contact that voter and say, hey, we can see there's no secrecy envelope, you can come in to, um, the Board of Elections, and we can help them, it's called here, but give them the secrecy envelope.
Okay. And just the one thing we did, the county has, or postage has been paid before for return mail, uh, was done in 2020 with the, but that was from, um, the state government actually provided for, paid for postage at that point, uh, was something the county has looked at, you know, previously in other elections since then, but it was always too expensive. Um, last year, the state issued a new grant, which gives a couple million dollars to counties to act, well, counties like us, to help actually reimburse us for our cost of election, so now the postage is, is something we can afford to do. In addition, um, that kind of postage, that particular kind of postage, the county only pays for envelopes that come back. Uh, so if someone applies for mail or absentee ballot, they get it, they don't send it back, we don't pay for the postage on that. We only pay if it actually comes back. Um, we have had some complaints and concerns from people, especially people that, whose kids are college, uh, and, you know, they, they don't, they don't have stamps, some kids at college don't know how to use stamps, uh, they don't know where to get stamps. Um, and so, um, it's, uh, something that we think is important to try and help people, um, be able to vote more easily. Um, the other comment, the Board of Elections, um, it is customary, in fact, it's law, that any commissioners who are running for reelection cannot sit on the Board of Elections. Um, and so the, I've had several conversations with the President Judge, uh, Judge Bateman, he appoints three judges to sit as the Board of Elections, presuming all three commissioners run for reelection, uh, and so he'll be appointing judges to be the Board of Elections, uh, later this month or early March, I think, is what he's looking at to do, so.
Can I just add to that? Commissioner Harvey is not the only one on the Board of Elections. So is Commissioner DeJorolomo, and so am I. It's the three commissioners, until the judge reappoints the three judges.
Um, the other comments regarding finance, the Zelenkovsky Axlerod, $158,000, Mr. Boskowicz or Ms. Gates, I don't know who, if, who wants to comment on that, what specifically that audit is looking at.
Yes, Commissioner, um, we, the county contracts with an independent auditor every year to conduct the county audit. Um, this year, um, before you, today, is a, a contract with Zelenkovsky Axlerod for, to complete the 2022 audit for $158,000. Zelenkovsky Axlerod has been the county's auditor for several years, um, and the, the amount, $158,090, has been the term of the contract. They've been agreeable not to increase the price for probably over a decade now, so.
Okay. And that's, the audit is for not just, not just your department, in other words, it's for-
It's for a county-wide audit.
Okay.
All the county departments.
Right, thank you. Okay. Uh, 7A talks about the Family Service Association, which is a nonprofit that operates a homeless shelter. Uh, the description of the action, of the item actually does say shelter assistance. Uh, we've been assisting them with help housing the homeless at the homeless shelter in Lower Bucks County. In terms of what money's left in that specific account?
So, uh, the contract was for $127,291. There's four months left. Uh, we're extending it four months. I just asked the program manager to give me the remaining balance, and I, I can report that out later.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Okay, so moving on, uh, the consent agenda, um, includes the minutes from January 18th, uh, and Resolutions 1 through, uh, 13. Just a couple notations in the consent agenda, excuse me, today, um, includes over a million dollars, uh, to go to, um, serve senior citizens in Bucks County, whether it's the Nishamani Manor, or, um, the area in aging. About $1.3 million to help, uh, the Behavioral Health and Developmental Programs, uh, which works with people who, uh, have mental or physical challenges in Bucks County. Mentioned roughly $269,000 for Board of Elections, $66,000 for emergency management. Uh, it also includes about $115,000 in revenue, uh, that we're getting in through, um, housing and community development to help house, house the homeless. Um, and, um, the next thing, I'll get to the regular agenda. So, um, pointing at also the Nishamani Manor, the one item, we're buying $265,000 for, uh, low-to-the-floor electric beds for residents in Nishamani Manor. Uh, those are beds made in the USA, which we always try to, proud to do that as much as we can. So, is there any, are there any comments or questions first on the minutes from last meeting? Nope? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Regular agenda, Planning Commission, um, this is regarding engineering work for a project in Lower Bucks County, linking a couple trails. Rich Bradler from the Planning Commission is here. Let's see, he's our guy to talk about trails.
Good morning, all. For your consideration today, is a contract between the county and Michael Baker International to develop the Levittown Trail. We intend to develop a 10-foot-wide asphalt path along Mill Creek Parkway, Lakeside Drive, as well as Levittown Parkway. And this will involve municipalities of Tullytown Borough, Falls Township, and, to a minor extent, Bristol Township. On the map, you see there, uh, on the right is, in yellow is Route 13, and then the red road there is, uh, Levittown Parkway. And on that map, the red areas are the existing trails in that area, and the dash, blue lines, are the subject area of this contract. This one's a little different. We're actually completing some connections and filling in some gaps to provide basically a whole pedestrian system in an area that has some, some pedestrian system, but needs a little help. Uh, overall, it's about less than a mile, and, uh, we've actually broken it up into four segments. Segment one is along Mill Creek Parkway, and that'll run from Levittown Parkway over to Port Lane. And then section two runs from Mill Creek Parkway along Levittown Parkway down to the existing trail that is shown on that map. At the end of that, segment three begins, and that's basically the township borough boundary, and that'll take us down to Levittown Town Center. And then section four is actually going to connect to this new trail, and then connect into Levittown Lake. In addition, we're going to upgrade the ADA ramps at Levittown Parkway and Pinewood Drive, as well as design and engineer crossings of Levittown Parkway at Sexton Lane, as well as a crosswalk along Mill Creek Parkway at Willow Drive. In order to hire Michael Baker, we went through the, the county's request for proposal process, and we had five submissions for the work, and Michael Baker came out on top. Total contract is about $142,000. Uh, we did get a grant through DVRPC, through their Coastal Zone Management Program, of, up to $70,000, uh, which requires a 50% match from the county, so we're going to use all of that $70,000. Basically, that's, that's the gist of the project, and if you have any questions, be happy to ask.
Okay. Comments, questions from commissioners?
No, I appreciate your being here, and we appreciate your work on this.
Yeah. And just for, um, for some clarification, and you're looking at this map, the, the line on the map, the red line, it's sort of like, there's a little bit of a, you know, kind of zigzag at the bottom, and then goes up the right side, that's the canal path? Is that, is that the canal path, you think, or is it, was that?
This was taken from our trails map, and then we, we overlaid the, the project.
Yeah, because this will eventually connect south on that map, connects to the, to Delaware Canal Path, the state, you know, the state park. So, um, you know, it is, it is combining these different trails and different networks that have been sort of pieced together by different municipalities over time, um, and so it's going to give people a little more access to be able to, to, you know, get where they want to get to, bike, walk, you know, jog, whatever, whatever they want, safely.
Right. Right. Yeah, we, we typically do these in bite-sized chunks, and getting that connection out of the canal path is obviously the next step.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate your-
If I could make a plug for Celebrate Trails Day on April 22nd?
Sure.
I'm going to celebrate that, so we'll be promoting that and-
Okay.
Coming up with some events.
I think that's, that's Earth Day, too, I think, isn't it?
It's a Saturday.
It might be Earth Day, too, so it's going to be-
And it is Earth Day.
It is Earth Day. Awesome. That's perfect. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, item 14 on the regular agenda, uh, is the approval of the contract with Michael Baker International, sort of the design and engineering services for the Levittown Trail project. Is there a motion for item 14? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Board appointments, um, the personnel actions, or, excuse me, personnel actions for the commissioners list, um, comments or questions about the commissioners pages of the personnel actions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now board appointments. Uh, we have multiple board appointments here, typical beginning of the year. Uh, a lot of these seats are up for renewal or up, become vacant. For the Board of Health, a four-year term, it is a four-year term, but this is actually finishing a term. Uh, Mr. Dennis Bauer will finish the term of a member who had to step off, so his term will end, uh, January 8th, 2024. Uh, for the Industrial Development Authority, a five-year term for Mr. Richard Gorlick. It's a new term that'll end January 1st, 2028. For the MHDP Advisory Board, three-year term. Ms. Kathy Sees is a new appointment. Her term will end, uh, February 2nd, 2026. Mr. David Hamowitz, uh, his term will end, uh, also February 1st, 2026. The St. Mary Hospital Authority, a five-year term, reappointment of Mr. Joseph Flore, uh, 12/31/27. For the Workforce Development Board, Stephen Mound, uh, term will end February 1st, 2026. Is there a motion for those appointments? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Other civics contributions, um, to be made to the Dementia Society of America, Doylestown Fish, and Drummers with Attitude, uh, $1,000, $1,500, and $2,500, respectively. Is there a motion for those contributions?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Chief Operating Officer, Ms. McKebbit?
Yes, Commissioner. So, uh, one, just reporting out, there's about, um, $1,900 left in that, in that grant, uh, but we needed to extend the time in order to pay the invoices that have been submitted. So that is the answer to that question. And then a couple things I wanted to, maybe if John could, John Ragula could talk about our telephone outage, outage that we are currently experiencing right now. Thanks, John.
Thank you, yes. The county of Bucks is currently experiencing, uh, outage for all of our telephones, both in and outbound. The challenge started yesterday afternoon, or evening, about nine o'clock. Uh, it was identified early this morning that the challenge was our, uh, circuits that go from the county to our Cisco provider, uh, for our phone service, were both inadvertently disconnected by the carrier, um, responding to a different change order for something else. So, they are actively working on trying to get those circuits back up and running. They have identified that they do have to reprogram with new security tokens, which takes some time to, uh, make that happen, but we are hopeful that, um, we can restore service as soon as possible. We were able to get, uh, our main numbers routed through the department, so you can still call our main number of 348-6000, or you can still reach the courts at 348, um, 6017, um, and you'll be able to get service through those. Also, a lot of our different departments, we were able to bring service to for their main number, so. We apologize to the public for this outage, and hope to have it restored soon.
Thank you, John. Um, and also wanted to report that we submitted the American Rescue Act Plan Report Guidance, uh, excuse me, the report last evening. It was due at 10 o'clock, uh, and it, and it got in just under the wire. Um, I want to thank the staff for all that they do to provide data to us for compliance. It is, it's not an easy task, and I know that it's difficult, and, and I appreciate all that they do. Uh, last task is for Dave to reconcile and make sure that everything is in, in the right categories, and the amounts are correct, and which I believe they are. Uh, and then we'll, we will post it online as soon as that's completed. Um, I also wanted to take a couple minutes to welcome George Hut, our new Director of General Services. Thanks for coming aboard, George. Welcome, if you'd like to say a few words. Not to put you on the spot.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Looking forward to being here for a long time and serving the, serving our community. Well, uh, I, I want to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to serve, and, you know, give me the best I got. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. And that concludes my report this morning.
Okay, thank you. So, listener's report, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I'll report that the Board of Commissioners had its standing executive session yesterday. Uh, they conducted that with staff and legal counsel, um, to receive information and to, um, discuss some personnel matters, as well as to receive confidential legal advice about, uh, some pending litigation. Um, specifically, I can share that, um, one of those litigations concerns the opioid, uh, lawsuits that the county has brought against a number of major corporations. Um, we talked quite a bit over the last year or more about, um, a major set of settlements that were reached with respect to, um, the three largest distributors, uh, in the country, as well as Johnson &amp; Johnson. Um, that was a, a national, nationwide settlement, um, that netted about $26 billion of relief to counties and municipalities, and Bucks County, um, chose to opt into that settlement. Um, part of the way that that settlement was structured was to encourage municipalities in the counties, um, to sign on as well, um, as, and that also included district attorneys, um, and our district attorney, a- along with our municipalities, um, joined together, making Bucks the largest county in Pennsylvania to receive its full share of much-needed resources, um, which this administration has, has put to really good work, um, based on some really good advice that, uh, Commissioner Harvey had, had requested from, from a, a task force or committee, um, to study these issues. So having said all that, um, uh, there is another set of very large settlements, um, slightly smaller. Um, this one, uh, altogether, um, w- would potentially add up to $20 billion, so about 75% of what we were looking at before. Um, these-
They conducted that with staff and legal counsel to receive information and to discuss some personnel matters, as well as to receive confidential legal advice about some pending litigation. Specifically, I can share that one of those litigations concerns the opioid lawsuits that the county has brought against a number of major corporations. We talked quite a bit over the last year or more about a major set of settlements that were reached with respect to the three largest distributors in the country, as well as Johnson &amp; Johnson. That was a nationwide settlement that netted about $26 billion of relief to counties and municipalities, and Bucks County chose to opt into that settlement. Part of the way that that settlement was structured was to encourage municipalities in the counties to sign on as well, and that also included district attorneys, and our district attorney, along with our municipalities, joined together, making Bucks the largest county in Pennsylvania to receive its full share of much-needed resources, which this administration has put to really good work, based on some really good advice that Commissioner Harvey had requested from a task force or committee to study these issues. So having said all that, there is another set of very large settlements, slightly smaller. This one altogether would potentially add up to $20 billion, so about 75% of what we were looking at before. These settlements have been negotiated nationwide with major pharmacies, that's Walgreens, Walmart, and CVS, as well as two major opioid manufacturers, Teva and Algen. And we anticipate this will be presented for, in one way or another, for the board's consideration, but we do want to share that in the event that these settlement dollars do go through, we again could be looking at many millions of dollars coming in to Bucks County to continue that important work to abate the opioid epidemic. Some of those settlements are structured to pay out sooner, some are structured to pay out later. We're talking about anywhere between, I think, six years in the case of the Walmart settlement, and 15 years in the case of the Walgreens settlement, and a number of options in between. But when the board opted in the past to opt in, the county stood to receive more than $45 million for this important work, so we hope to have more good news to report in the near future. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. All right, move on to public comments, this is on general issues. First name on the list is Stephanie Weiser.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Weiser, and I'm in Buckingham Township. And first, I want to thank the commissioners very, very much for the work you've been doing in Bucks County. I see it reflected everywhere, and particularly want to address the efforts that you've made towards recycling. So I know that, somewhere I read that you had gotten a little bit more income or financing towards that, and so I've taken advantage of the shredding, of the recycling, of the dangerous materials and of the electronics, and I want to encourage you to branch out even further. There are so many things, like children's car seats that go into the landfills, and also CDs. People have thousands of them in their homes, and there's no place to recycle them, and so I want to encourage you to look into that, see if you can get financing for that. If there's any way that I, as a citizen, can help in that regard, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you so much for all you've done, I want to encourage you to keep going, and I hope you all get reelected. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next name is Audrey Strine. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Hello, all of you. My name's Audrey Strine, I'm a Warwick resident, been Bucks County resident my whole life. I have a question of why a proclamation of $630,000 was given to an organization named The Rainbow Room that promotes inappropriate sex, inappropriate sex toys, they just had a prom, which they were handing out goodie bags, condoms, dental dams, and you're mixing 13-year-olds with 21-year-olds. To me, in my book, that's pedophilia, that's grooming children. What benefit can a 13-year-old get out of an adult show which is meant for adult entertainment only from a drag show? I really don't see any point in that, how that can benefit. And you look at the public school system, name any public school system that would ever be caught, and if they were, handing out dental dams, condoms, and lubes to 13, and 14, and 15-year-olds, or having a drag show at the school, or even mixing college kids with middle school kids at a dance. Totally inappropriate to begin with, let alone using county money to promote that. I think we have such greater needs in this county that that money could be going towards the food pantry, or that woman there was mentioning about the recycling, something that benefits the whole county instead of a detriment to this. And also, I just need to also add that CHOP, the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, was at one of these events at The Rainbow Room, and they were promoting their sexual transition services to double mastectomies, and you name it, whatever somebody needs to have knowledge about that. And these kids, the parents have no idea this is going on, and it's just inappropriate.
We're doing this on the street.
Okay, thank you.
It would be in jail.
Thank you. Liz Yaus?
Hi, I'm Liz Yaus from Northampton Township. I also would like to have a request that the board have one of the two commissioner meetings each month be at night, so that working people like myself don't have to take time off from work to attend these meetings. And I was looking at the budget, there is a revenue section under Finance Administration, line number 105, voter registration, Board of Elections. Last year, the revenue was $7,200, and 2023 budget is $1.7 million. I don't really understand what revenue we're receiving to, for voter registration and to the Board of Elections. I'm just wondering, who earns money for voter registration, and who at the Board of Elections makes money? Just curious about that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Sorry. Computer went to sleep, okay. Beth Kersio?
It's a pleasure to see those wonderful children and to see the good things they do. There is an attack in our country and our community and in Bucks County on the most innocent, and that is children. And you all, you know, posted the human trafficking thing for January. Well, this is not innocence, there's an agenda behind this trans things with children. These are children. We're stealing their innocence, and once you steal a child's innocence, it's very, very hard for them in life, and this is why the suicide rate is up, this is why these children are drugged and everything else. I'm a mother of four that are raised, but I have six grandchildren. Thank God they're not right here, they're in different states. But if we're not going to speak up, this is not a political agenda here, this has nothing to do with politics. This has to do with the most innocent in our society, that these grown people are gyrating at them, many times without parental consent. We see a woman in Soderton from Soderton School District, that her child went there and was told 14 times by a teacher that she could trans into something else. We know it's a big business, $100,000 to transition a child, and that's where the money lies, between the drugs. Once these children are transitioned, it has ruined their fertility, they're messed up mentally, it just, I mean, most of us are of the age, some of you are kind of young, but I'm going on 65, so what happened to letting us be innocent with playing in the mud and our mothers knowing what we were doing? Now, because of we're so taxed by the federal government and the state and everything else, it takes two to work, so nobody's really keeping an eye on these children. A mother's deadbeat tired when she gets home and has to do other things, but I urge Bucks County, Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, to protect the children from things like The Rainbow Room. That money could have been used for something great, and instead--
Okay, thank you. Joe Frederick?
Speak a little bit about the COVID blood clotting that we were talking about last year, or last year, yeah, last month. Blood clotting is a significant cause of death of COVID-19 patients. However, a new study published in the journal Circulation found that the risk of blood clots may remain for almost a year after acute COVID-19 infection. From January 1st to December 7th, 2020, investigators studied vascular disease after COVID-19 diagnosis. A total of 48 million unvaccinated adults were included in the analysis. The elevated risk after, the other risk of blood clots after COVID-19 remained high during the duration of the study. Notably, this data was collected in 2020 during the first wave of COVID-19 pandemic before wide-scale vaccinations. The study at the University of Maryland, York University, and Yale, COVID-19 vaccinations prevented 3.25 million deaths, prevented an estimated 18.6 million hospitalizations, and almost 120 million infections. Deaths from COVID-19 still remain high, an average of 565 per day, which is the third-leading cause of deaths in America. With the blood clots, J&amp;J vaccine had four deaths in 1 million from blood clots, that was suspended and its use is limited. AstraZeneca COVID-19 vaccine has never been used, and the only two are Moderna and Pfizer, and their history is very, very low from COVID deaths. So when people come up and call you murderers with no backing it up, with no facts, I find it very sad that people do these things, because that only hurts not only you, but the--
Thank you. Priscilla Linden?
Want to thank the Bucks County Commissioners for supporting the African-American History Museum of Bucks County. It will give our family a place to take our 10-year-old multiracial grandson, to show him that people where he lives have played a big part in the background of Africans in America, although his heritage is slightly different, since his daddy is a recent immigrant in the last 10 years from the Commonwealth of Dominica in the eastern Caribbean. But having such a valuable source of positive information about African-Americans in Bucks County, combined with Bucks County initiatives like the Proclamation of Black History Month, and balanced by other initiatives like last month's recognition of A.J. Ali's film Walking While Black: Love is the Answer, used for employee and especially police department trainings, I pray these might help to keep my grandson safe and prevent his becoming the next Tyree Nichols. I would only hope that Bucks County school boards will also take advantage of these initiatives to tilt the balance toward positive relationships among the citizens of Bucks County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are the names on our list. Just to go back and address some of the questions, Ms. Weiser brought up recycling. Obviously, we do the, a couple times a year, the hazardous waste recycling events, actually, Mr. Stone, Director of our Planning Commission's in the back of the room, so he, his office helps coordinate those. We've looked over the years, really since I came in, at an e-waste recycling program. It's very difficult to kind of get off the ground, I think there are some laws that have to be changed. I know there's some movement, well, discussion of movement in Harrisburg on how to better manage recycling e-waste, whether it's computers, you know, monitors, or, you know, printers, or anything like keyboards, et cetera, televisions. But it's, at one point in time, I think there were a lot of places that did it basically for free, you could just drop things off, and then it got to be so overwhelming, and the cost went up so much that no one really does it that way anymore. And so we're looking at ways, we've been looking at ways to try and figure out how to do that in a way that's cost-effective while also serving the people of the county. And it's been a little challenging to find vendors who are able to do it. We do have a sustainability coordinator now who can work with our, we have a recycling coordinator as well, so they can work together. Recently had a question asked to me by somebody about the political signs, the yard signs you see, some of which I still see from November on different parts of the roads in Bucks County. There is, I think Montgomery County actually has a recycling program where those signs can be recycled, the steel wires and the paper themselves. We don't have that here, you know, something we can certainly look at doing in terms of things like CDs, I mean, we're always open for ideas on how to do it. It always comes down to cost, unfortunately, and it's certainly something we want to do. I know our sustainability director is working on a climate action plan, I don't know if that's going to be including recycling issues or not, but certainly we can continue looking at that and trying to do better, so. Commentary about the Rainbow Room, the $630,000 proclamation, that was a state grant, that was not county, and so, you know, coming up here and insinuating that the county gave $630,000 to The Rainbow Room is inaccurate, it's not, you know, certainly not what this county did, you saying county money was used is inaccurate. In terms of The Rainbow Room as an independent organization, how they handle things, and, you know, the parents who choose to have their, you know, send their kids there, or the children who want to go there themselves, the young people who want to go there themselves is obviously, is their choice. And having worked in schools a long time, certainly the last part of my career, I saw a definite uptick in the number of students who I had personally in my classroom who were transgender, students who were openly gay, and I treated every kid the same, you know? I treated every kid, called the kid whatever name they wanted to be called because it's their name. And the thing that made me very hopeful as I watched the interaction with other students was how accepting other students were of those students. It certainly is a change, I saw a change happening from the beginning of my career in the early 90s to the end of my career in 2019, a definite change, in how young people themselves viewed other young people who were LGBTQ. And so that gives me some, a lot of hope for the future, that this next generation is going to be more respectful and more understanding and welcoming of young people who might be different than them. In terms of the budget for Board of Elections, I don't know if anyone wants to comment on the revenue, I'm assuming that's the grant? Yeah, it's, I mean, as I mentioned earlier, there was a state grant to help pay for elections, that just was last year, I think it was the first year it was passed, July of last year was the first year it was passed. So, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, or dice, steel, or thunder? I got it? Okay, yeah. So the reason why, obviously, we're anticipating, we couldn't anticipate that money last year, we didn't know when we did the budget for 2022 in November, December of 2021, that there'd be a law passed in July of 2022 that would put money into the budget for elections, we had no way, obviously, of knowing that. You know, I don't think Mr. Buscol uses a lot of tools, I don't think a Magic 8-Ball is one of them to do the budget. This year, obviously, we know that money's coming because the grant is still in place, and so it can be included in the budget.
So, yeah, it'll appear as revenue as we spend it down. So, for, just for the accounting purposes, there's, Bucks County received $2.4 million, it's called the Election Integrity Grant, it was passed by the legislature last year, and there are specific ramifications of how we're allowed to use it, and as we use those, there are two elections every year. We all think about the presidential election and big, you know, congressional elections, but there are local municipal elections, so every year, there are two elections every year, there's primary and a general. So as we use those dollars the way that we can to reimburse the county general fund for the costs we use for elections, that number will go down, but that's what it is, it's a grant.
All right, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so we're moving on to Commissioner Cummins, Commissioner Marcegoi?
I don't have any comment, other than to say the telephone system, that it's not working, it is working for 911, though, so people can get through if they dial that.
Okay. Commissioner Trump?
Yeah, just a comment about what happened at The Rainbow Room recently. You know, I think it's one thing which is perfectly fine, young people getting together, whether it's a dance or a prom, and they're gay, I mean, that to me is fine. But one of the things that I heard about this last event that's really troubling and disturbing to me is that it appears, and I'm not sure this is true, that there were children under the age of 18, 13, and 14 years old, and I believe, and again, I don't know if this is true, I got this from a video, that they were handing out lubricants and condoms to young children. And as someone who's raised four children and is now raising a grandchildren who's 12 years old-- 12 years old, if that is true, that's very disturbing to me. And I heard, Mr. Chairman, did we give them $3,000? I don't believe so, because I went back and checked the last three years on the money that we give out, and I did not see a dollar that we gave to The Rainbow Room. Yeah, I checked, because I went back, Audrey, three years, and looked, and I did not see where we gave. Now, they came and made a presentation at one time, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago, and, you know, I thought the presentation was fine. But as far as giving out condoms and lubricants, I'm going to call them children, or young teenagers who are 13, 14, even 15 or 16 years old, I really think that crosses, that crosses a line. And I, like, my question would be, do the parents know that they got them? I mean, I kind of wonder, and I kind of wonder if the parents would be okay if they knew that. I mean, I'd have a hard time believing that most of them would be okay with that. So that's just a comment, and again, The Rainbow Room, I mean, as far as getting children together, and teenagers, and, you know, having a good time, and having a prom, or a dance, or any kind of activities, I think there's nothing wrong with that. The condoms and lubricants, passing them out to children, I think really crosses a red line. Thank you.
Just a couple things. Want to thank Bernard Griggs and the members of the African-American Museum for being here and presenting about Black History Month. Talked about this, I said this, I don't know if it was a year ago, two years ago, similar meeting this time of year. When I first started teaching in the early 90s, mid 90s, one of the projects I would do with my students is I would give out coffee can, and I'd put the names of sort of lesser-known Americans, you know, or people who had had an impact on America, especially, you know, 100 so years ago, 120 years ago, and they'd have to pull out the name, just, you know, and, you know, basically, we'd take some time, we'd go down to the media center, the library in the school, they'd do some research, and they'd kind of quickly do a presentation about who this person was, because we tend to focus a lot on the very, very famous. We don't always focus on the people who really have done, you know, kind of amazing things, and nobody really knows who they are anymore. Their names have been lost to history. But in there, I'd always have a few names of African-Americans who had done important things, especially in the 1800s, early 1900s. And, you know, students can't, the coffee can would get passed around, eventually the kids started calling it the can of death, because they just knew that it was actual work they'd have to do. They have to do some research and do a presentation, so. But, you know, the media center, and I always kind of pay attention to who got the names of African-Americans, because the school I was in at the time was in New Jersey, it was a wealthy school district. It was a large school district, roughly the size, Pensbury and the Chaminade size, great media center, very up to date, and yet the reference materials they had, printed in the 70s, 80s, some in the 60s, didn't have any of these people's names, you know? And I knew that. And so I'd watch these students go from book to book, encyclopedia to encyclopedia, looking for this person. They'd say, this person didn't do anything important, because I don't, this, Mr. Harper, you gave me a bad name, are you sure this is actually somebody we need to know about? And I wouldn't let them twist in the wind too long. Eventually, I'd sort of like, you know, direct them in the right way. But, you know, it was part of the lesson, and then I explained to the rest of the class when they got back, why do you think you had such trouble finding out about this person? Why do you think you got so much trouble finding out about the person, you know, who invented the traffic light, or the gas mask, or the person who pioneered the automatic connection linkage system that trains use still to this day around the world, you know, when he did it in, I think, the 1860s? And they wouldn't know. And I'd say, what if I told you the person was African-American? And it still wouldn't register to them, you know, that they wouldn't understand, well, why, that's pretty important, why is his name out in that book? Or that book, or this book, or this book, or this book. And it really is factors, somebody, a history teacher, bless you, somebody's a history teacher, you know, history teachers tend to be taught the way they were taught, and they tend to focus, and I'm no different, you know, kind of focusing on certain, the exciting stuff, you know, the wars and things like that, that's what, that's what sort of hooks you in to study history. And then you, you know, sometimes branch out, but if, a lot of cases, you don't know the history that you don't know. You know, you haven't, if you haven't been taught that history, probably because your teachers weren't taught that history, and their teachers weren't taught that history, and so they don't necessarily know, they have to go look around for it and pass it on and broaden the horizon. So I think it's, you know, it's certainly something that I, bless you, bless you, Mr. Haron's allergic, Sheriff Haron's allergic to meetings that get near 12 o'clock. Lots of sneezing. But, you know, certainly, we want to try and do what we can to sort of increase that exposure, not just for African-Americans, but also the same is true of a lot of women in this country who have had a major impact, people of, you know, people who are Latin culture and Asian, et cetera, so. So, and a lot of the people that I included, included people who were white, who just, names have just been lost, people don't really know very much about them, and yet you look at what they did, and you think, wow, that's pretty impressive. So we don't, if we don't keep remembering our history, it's lost. So. Last thing I want to touch on, and apologize, this might go a little bit long, sorry, Mr. Sheriff Haron, but just want to talk a little bit about process, because it's something that we take for granted, I think. I've thanked members of the county staff, and the COO, and the solicitor at different times, for, you know, helping to put the meeting together, and what goes into a meeting, and thank you so much for, you know, doing this, and never actually run through the steps for people that just don't know what goes into putting this meeting. And I'm just talking about the agenda part of the meeting, I'm not talking about the audiovisual, I'm not talking about the presentations and everything else. But, you know, in order for something to get on our agenda, it's a lengthy process, and it goes through a lot of different offices, a lot of eyes, a lot of hands. You know, many, if not most, of the items on the agendas are recurring contracts with providers, you know, to keep the size and cost of county government manageable, the county contracts outwork to vendors and providers for a whole range of services, from food delivery to seniors, clinics, and counseling for drug and alcohol, and behavioral health, and tree trimming, and snow removal for general services. And, you know, we have 2,400 people who work for this county, we'd probably need about 10,000 people working for this county if we did all those things ourselves. So we contract things out, and those contracts come up every year, two years for renewal. That's a lot of what goes on our agenda. Each department's responsible for the management of these contracts, they work in conjunction with finance, with purchasing, with legal, you know, law department to make sure the contracts are in place. Within each department, you have employees who are responsible, their job is to make sure those contracts get prepared properly, keeping in mind that they not only have to follow county policy, county code, but if it's money coming from the state, there's state code and state policies you have to follow. If it's coming from the federal government, there's federal on top of that that has to be followed, and they have to make sure all those i's are dotted, all those t's are crossed. This is for something to get on our agenda, and it hasn't even left a department yet, you know? Managers and department heads review all these items, same is true of law officers, as they're looking at their contracts and things they're doing. And that's, then they can submit it for an inclusion on an agenda. Any item to be placed on the agenda for a commissioner's meeting has to be submitted through the electronic management system we have here. Depending on the type of contract, it could have to be put into the system upwards of a month in advance of this meeting. So some of the things that are on our agenda today were inputted as items, you know, in technically the end of 2023, or 2022, in December, in order to get on this agenda. Some only need a couple weeks. You know, once they're entered into the system, that's when the item gets reviewed by law department, for example, possibly purchasing and finance, depending on what it is, and also goes to the COO. Problems or questions with the item will be flagged at that time, any of those, and be sent back, you know, for more review. And this goes, again, for basically anything that was on this agenda. Roughly a week before the commissioner's meeting today, about a week ago, there was a pre-agenda meeting held to review the items that had been proposed for the agenda. That pre-agenda meeting would include the COO, the deputy COO, the chief financial officer of the law department, communications director, a court administration, possibly purchasing director, other division leaders, depending on what's on their agenda, are all included in that pre-agenda meeting to, again, discuss what items are going to go on this agenda, what, you know, is it something that's budgeted, did it clear all the hurdles, et cetera? This is before it even gets to, you know, for example, the commissioners to see. Following that meeting, the items proposed for the agenda and their supporting documents were compiled for review by the commissioners, who may individually ask staff for more information about any of the items on the agenda. You know, commissioners may already know some of these items, because depending on what they are, it could be something that's been coming, for example, the Trails project is something that we've, we've kind of known was coming for a little while now, and so that's, you know, kind of something that wasn't a total surprise to the commissioners. And at some point, a commissioner, any one of the three of us could have reached out to Mr. Brayle or ask him for a little more detail about something if we, if we had questions. The staff will typically include resolution requests on the consent agenda unless a commissioner asks for it to be moved. Again, because these items go through so many steps, so many offices, so many eyes look at them, the fact that they're on a consent agenda essentially means that they've, you know, they've gone through a pretty rigorous step process just to get there. Sometimes, you know, if there's something we'd like to highlight, like, for example, today, a commissioner could ask, you know, I'd like to see that on a regular agenda. I think that'd be something that we should do a little bit more on. Commissioners usually meet in executive session the day before a commissioner's meeting, as you heard Mr. Khan talk about a little bit earlier. That meeting includes the deputy COO, the COO, the solicitor, and the communications director. That's where we receive more information, could be about personnel items, could be legal issues, et cetera. You know, and that kind of gets us up to where we are today. You know, it's, as I said, could be a month worth of review, and that's not counting all the work that was done in each department leading up to the point where it gets submitted. And so, you know, we talk about, you know, the items that go on here, we talk about the work the staff does, and as we speak right now, we have people in offices, one, some are all the 70 roughly departments or offices in this county, who are already putting things together for the March, you know, 1st agenda, or possibly even the April agenda, depending on whatever they're looking at. And so we thank the staff, we thank the people that work here every day, not necessarily in this room, because they're usually in their offices getting ready for the next meeting, or the meeting after that, meeting after that, and so that's what we're doing, that's why we thank them, because it kind of makes it easier for us to come up here and see all these things, and then vote yes on them, or vote no on them, or hear a presentation about them. So, thank everybody else for a good meeting, and I will entertain, just making sure my points, yep, entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.